Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Bryan City Council November 2nd Point 20 Meeting. And start with the approval of the minutes of October 19th.
This is Mary, I'll make a motion.
This is Judy, I'll second.
Mary? Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, the second agenda item is hearing of any public concerns. Are you aware of any mayor?
Not at this time.
Then item three, uh, in ordinance, Laurie, please number and read.
Ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand twenty, in ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This is a transfer request from the one percent income tax fund of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the general fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of four hundred thousand dollars from the half percent income tax fund to the four oh one capital improvement fund for projects upcoming. A transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the half percent income tax fund to the five oh five sewer drain maintenance fund for spending purposes. A transfer of one thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars from the four fifteen South William Street project fund to the five twenty-five water capital reserve fund, and this will close out that project for the year. Total amount of transfers requested, eight hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
You're on motion to suspend.
I'm motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, this is Mary.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Judy?
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And item number four, our ordinance, Laurie, please, number and read.
Ordinance number fifty, two thousand twenty, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriations request for the Parks and Recreation Department for four thousand dollars for operating supplies. This is so they can buy street trees with a donation made by the Bryan Municipal Utilities. It's also a negative appropriation in the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars for the five oh one electric fund. This is a negative one point three million from the transfer to the Electric Capital Reserve and a negative two hundred thousand for the utilities with AM. Um, as you know, the BMU has seen a significant decrease in revenues this year. And this is a, an appropriation, a negative appropriation request to show that as the revenues have decreased, they've also are decreasing their spending. In addition, there is a one point three million dollar negative appropriation in the five one five Electric Capital Reserve Fund for many projects, as they recognized the revenues were decreasing and that the transfer was not going to be able to take place from the five oh one to the five one five for funding. They decreased or eliminated a number of their capital projects to offset those declining revenues. Total amount of negative appropriation requested, two million seven hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. I should have mentioned that the Board of Public Affairs approved this request, um, through resolution thirty-eight, two thousand twenty, at their last Board of Public Affairs meeting on October twentieth.
I'll motion to suspend. Yeah.
I'll second.
Mary, I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm motion to approve. This is Mary.
I'll second, this is Judy.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'd also like to say, uh, thank you to, to you, uh, Laurie, and, uh, to, uh, the BMU staff for staying on the top of that, um, issue as, uh, to, to keep, uh, a nice, um, projection of what's gonna be happening in the future. Uh, in keeping, um, our hands on top of it, I think, um, goes a long way, uh, to develop trust with the public. So, thank you, um, BMU, and to, um, Laurie and your staff for that, and the mayor, um, as well. Number five, agenda item five, number and read, please.
Ordinance number fifty-one, two thousand twenty, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to approve a purchase order to best equipment for the purchase of an EnviroSite Rover X mainline inspection system for the city of Bryan Engineering Department through the State of Ohio Procurement State Term Schedules, STS, purchasing program pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code one twenty-five dot oh four C at a total cost of sixty-three thousand twelve dollars and zero cents, hereby waiving the competitive bidding process prescribed by Ohio Revised Code one twenty-seven dot one six.
Good evening, everyone. Um, our super camera that we currently have is, I wanna say thirteen or fourteen years old, and it's at the point where it's beyond repair. The last time we had it in, they said, please do not send it back to us. Uh, the parts are obsolete and it's outdated. I need to televise the sewers, or actually Tyson's group needs to, but I need to do the reporting for the sewer collection system, and it's a need. I had farmed it out one day to, uh, SNS directional boring, or excuse me, it was ART, had them come in and was over two thousand dollars for the day for them to do the job for me that we had to do. So, um, we really need this, and, uh, with your permission, I request you to suspend and approve this, so, uh, it's a purchase we don't do that often. You know, but, uh, there is money left in my budget for it, I'm comfortable with it, and I don't wanna speak for Laurie and the mayor, but I believe they're both comfortable as well because it's on the agenda. So, with that, I would request you to suspend and approve, and allow me to proceed with this.
I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, this is Mary.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes. I'm move to approve, Rick.
I'll second Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to add, um, to that issue that though it may have cost the city a couple thousand dollars, um, it was nice that we had a backup.
Absolutely.
That allowed us to do that, so I wanted to also, uh, tip of the hat to, um, SNS Boring, um, because, uh, it, it's something that not every community has that kind of availability, so, uh, thanks to them as well. Uh, work permit, item, agenda item number six.
Oh yeah, I'll handle that for Andy tonight. Uh, Thomas King came to us, uh, with a set of state-approved plans. Um, he did a second-story remodel, um, at one oh six, one oh eight South Lynn Street. Um, it's about a hundred thousand dollar construction cost, and he's remodeling fourteen hundred square feet on the second floor. So with that, I, uh, request you approve the building permit.
This is Judy, I'll move to approve.
I'll second, Jim.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
And item number seven, um, police permission to test.
Good evening, I've got two of them in front of you, I will go through and do the, uh, fire dispatcher first. I'm requesting you give a civil service, they're both civil service tests. I'm requesting a civil service test for the position of fire, police dispatcher, or city of Bryan on the National Testing Network. The last civil service exam for police-fire dispatcher is conducted on June twenty-ninth of two thousand nineteen, and we've exhausted the list. And then I'm also requesting civil service tests through National Testing Network for position of police officer for the city of Bryan Police Department. Uh, the last test was concluded on, on the fourteenth of two thousand twenty twenty, uh, through NTN, and the cer- the certified list has been exhausted. We were able to only hire one off that list, so we need a new list for both positions.
Chief, may I ask you, how many, how many policemen do we have at this moment?
Uh, there's, I believe, fourteen off the top of my head.
Fourteen, and how many do you like to have to run your department efficiently?
We're authorized to go up to twenty-one, I believe, is a full.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, are you also gonna post for the captain's position too?
Uh, not right away.
Why are we waiting?
We will be eventually posting for it, but we have not, I didn't have it on the agenda and everything for this council meeting to ask for it.
I move to appro- this is Judy, I move to approve to give the test.
For both, right?
For both, yes.
This is Mary, I second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary? Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I believe that's everything on the agenda, so if we'd, uh, like to go around the, the room, if you will, if there's any city employees, um, or BPA members. Mr. Ingstrom?
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Matt Neff, the high school art department, and the students that he had or allowed to paint the snowplow. They painted a jack-o'-lantern on the snowplow, and we parked it out at the park Saturday for the drive-through. So I'd like to thank Matt Neff and his students that painted that. That's it.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
Council, um, along that lines, I'd like to just take a quick minute, this is Ben, um, and thank everybody that helped out with the Halloween event. Um, obviously, it was a lot different than what we've done in the past, um, but it starts with our department heads and all the other departments that were willing to bring stuff out um, and make it, um, somewhat of a nice event for the kids. Bruce kinda took over when I was, um, quarantined, so I wanna thank him for all his help over the last week, he kinda got shoved into that, um, kinda secondhand and then, uh, you know, didn't hesitate a minute to help me out, so I do appreciate that. And last but certainly not least, I need to thank Cindy. Um, Cindy takes care of our Halloween event, she sorted all the candy, she bought all the candy, she bought all the bags. She works really, um, really hard to make that event special for the kids, um, and a lot of times it's something that goes unseen. Um, so I wanna make sure that everybody understands how hard she works at that event and other events, um, but, uh, without her, we couldn't have pulled off this Halloween event that we pulled off on Saturday for the kids of our community, um, so I do wanna make sure, um, she gets a big shout-out for that. And last but not least, I wanna thank Nate Gardner, uh, Bryan Municipal Utilities, Bryan Boyer Public Affairs, uh, for their four thousand dollar donation um, to the Parks and Recreation Department tree program, um, in replacing street trees. Um, we lose a lot of trees through construction, um, through clearing of lines, um, all that fun stuff. Um, so we're grateful that they're willing to give back to the community, um, with street trees. That's all, thank you.
Ben, I have a question, do you have any idea about how many showed up on Saturday?
Oh, I talked to Cindy this morning, and we roughly went through six hundred bags of treats. So, kinda the way, I, I don't know if you're familiar with how we did it, but everybody in the car that was of age got a bag of treats at the end. And she, she did a thousand bags, she pre-sorted it all, um, and had a thousand bags ready to go, and she estimates that she gave out somewhere between six fifty and six hundred bags. Um, and then we donated the rest to, um, the Eastland Baptist Church who do an event down at Matty Marsh on the night of Halloween. And then also our preschool program, kids get a bag, so that's right about between six fifty and six hundred.
Thank you.
Did it, um, Ben, um, did it, well, maybe the better question is, it, was there through, uh, through this process of it's hopefully being the, maybe the only time this occurs, did it, was there anything that we learned from it, was that amount of time enough? Were people backed up? I mean, were, if it was six hundred, probably, what, three, four, three, four hundred cars, maybe? Did it, did it work well flow-wise, since it was just one time, that's always difficult to do?
I'm, I'm gonna speak to that quick, John, and then I'm gonna let anybody else chime in. Obviously, being in quarantine, I did not have the opportunity to be there, um, but the people that I have talked to, it worked really well. You know, at the beginning, maybe it was backed up a little bit until we got started, but once we got started, the flow of traffic, I believe, was pretty consistent for forty minutes, forty-five minutes, and then it kind of papered off a little bit. The one thing that Cindy and I discussed this morning, um, that we, we feel like we learned is, the idea of pre-packaging all the candy for the kids, we think is a really good idea. Even if we go back to the ice rink at some point, which, we certainly hope that we can provide that event for the kids in the future at the ice rink. But our idea would be is to bag all the candy into individual bags like what we did for this, and when you come into the ice rink on that Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, you get your bag of candy, and then you're free to go play any game you wanna play. Um, it takes the responsibility off of the NHS kids trying to hand out candy. It also takes the responsibility off of Cindy during the event, trying to keep all the buckets full, so she, so the kids can hand out candy. Um, so we do think that's maybe something we would like to try when we go back to the ice rink to make, um, the day in the ice rink move a little bit smoother, um, maybe than what it does normally.
Good. It, it's another example of that necessity is true of the mother invention, and there's also good things that, not many, but there's also good things that have come out through this current cultural era that we are living through, so, uh, and thank you, um, I said it before, thank you to you and all your staff for, for doing something, I think it meant, uh, in fact, I know it meant a lot to, uh, to the community and to, to the kids, so, thanks a lot.
Yeah, I agree, John. Um, as we stated to you a month ago, our idea was just, something is better than nothing. Um, and the ability, six hundred to six hundred and fifty kids got to come through and see some of the trucks, and, you know, I don't know if you saw Tyson's plow, but it was pretty neat. So, it's a different, yes, it's different, um, but at least there was something there, and six hundred to six hundred and fifty kids got an opportunity to go through it, and, uh, we're very thankful for that opportunity.
Also, Tyson, just as a thing that I'm sure you're already aware, um, and, and, uh, some of the municipalities, Toledo, actually, one of them, which shocked me, uh, has, sometimes there's snowplows painted, um, also on holiday things like Santa Claus and that kinda stuff, so, you know, if, if, uh, Mr. Neff and others, and you are willing and interested in that, um, that, that I think is a pretty good idea, it always looks kinda festive when a snowplow is coming through, and you kinda laugh when there's a picture of a reindeer and Santa Claus or something, just a thought.
That's, ODAC usually does that, they have a contest every year, but, yeah, I mean, we can look into, I'm not opposed to it. Yes, but have to talk to the school and see if they wanna do more of it.
Sure. Well, thank you to both of you, appreciate that. Anyone else from, uh, either the city or BPA? Not, um, like to start with Jim.
So yet, please exercise your right to vote, uh, tomorrow. Uh, everybody stay safe and, uh, have a good night.
Mary?
I'd like to thank everyone who did help participate in the, um, Parks and Rec Halloween Fun, and thank the street department also. That's really all I've got, and everyone vote tomorrow, please.
Uh, Judy?
I would just like to ditto those same words, all those who participated in getting that ready for the kids, Cindy, especially you. Uh, I think it gave the kids something to look forward to, and there hasn't been too much of that since March. And also, if you have not already voted, please do so. Have a good evening.
Mr. Rick?
I'm just echoing the same sentiments, I've heard good things about the, uh, Halloween event, and, uh, thank you to everybody that was involved, and yes, get out and vote.
Uh, is Rhonda on or here?
Rhonda's in my office because her link didn't work, that's why I have the mask on, it's not a fashion statement.
Okay.
Anything, Rhonda? He does not. She said no, sir.
No is good enough for me, but thank you. Uh, Laurie?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I wanna echo all the things, please vote tomorrow, um, congratulations to the Parks and Rec and all the city departments that helped on a fabulous event Saturday. I think that the most important thing is these kids throughout, I don't know if any of you passed out candy, I did, I put a table out so they kinda could distance themselves. But I don't know how many kids said, we're just so happy to be outside and have some kind of normal. Um, and I think that while we're in this pandemic, we need to be very cautious of, you know, parties and gatherings and those kind of things, but we also need to create events very similar to what the bards did at the amphitheater, where we can still community together, because Bryan is such a good community, and we are tight and close-knit, and so we need to continue to safely have events, so that we can do that and not lose sight of who we are. With that being said, um, I had a conversation between the health department, uh, Mr. Tinkle at the hospital, and numbers are going up in Williams County. I don't know if any of you recognize that Thursday, the governor got on TV and kinda said, hey, mayors, I'm tossing the ball at you on your local communities and commissioners. I'm gonna ask council members to join me in that, um, when you're speaking to the community, Max, hopefully you'll put something in the paper, we just really need to be conscious about our mask-wearing, we're doing pretty well here in city leadership, as you know, when Rhonda walked in, my mask went on, it's just habit for us if we're gonna be in a room together. Um, I would encourage people, I went to Walmart on Friday to get Halloween candy, and I actually felt bad for the employees there because they're forced to work, wear masks every day when general public can come in and not wear them, so if we could just, you know, kind of increase the mask-wearing, I know it's politically charged, I'm not asking for that kind of conversation, but I think that there's enough data around that when you're out in the public and, and you can't stay six feet apart, that there is proof that wearing the mask does help stall the spread, so.
Over your nose, too.
Over your nose is great, you're right, so, thank you, and I hope you guys can kind of join me in that message to our community.
Yeah, on that note, Judy, uh, cause one of the things I was gonna, it kinda end with was the mask, and I'll, I'll just take that and run with it real quick, and Judy's comment as well. Uh, there was a, a gentleman in a store that I was in, he was not an employee, um, but had his mask actually at the top of his chin. And my thought was, why? I mean, it, it's, it's not coming out your chin, okay? I, I would strongly encourage, um, all, especially as this continues to pick up in our area, um, to wear the mask. It's, it's now being said that, um, uh, certain masks, um, the KN ninety-fives, not, not the, not the PPE for the N ninety-fives, but the KN ninety-fives that you can buy commercially, actually have like a ninety-three to ninety-five percent transmission stop rate, as well as a coming-in rate. So, uh, I would encourage people to wear the mask, wear it appropriately, and wear it all the time, um, because I think, uh, in a, in a, in a few months, hopefully, uh, we'll have a vaccine, continue to have better treatments, but I don't think that's gonna be available to everyone until probably later, um, in the, the spring, early summer. So we're gonna need to continue to keep vigilant, even though it's a real pain for everyone, but I really would appreciate that, um, from all the, the Bryan community. Also, I'd like to, um, congratulate SNS, um, Boring, I will not be able to attend their new facility open house, but, um, would encourage others to, it's, it's a, um, very, I'm always very hopeful when I see businesses expanding in Bryan, and I'm also very appreciative of, of those individuals that do that. Um, and also like to thank Mr. King for his expansion, um, as, as well, and, um, actually Eric's Ice Cream, which should be, um, making some expansions here in the next, in the next few months, uh, appreciate their, um, willingness to, uh, invest in, in Bryan. Uh, also would like to mention the Chamber of Commerce, um, in terms of their Christmas light donations, I, I, uh, remember, uh, vividly, and I mean vividly, when I was five and six, um, begging mom and dad to take me down to the courthouse so we could walk around and see the, the lights, uh, and shop it. At that point, it was a lot of shops that none of you, uh, many of you wouldn't even know, but, um, it was just, uh, a thrill for me, and I think it's a, a great thing for Bryan, and appreciate, um, the chamber, uh, doing that year in and year out, and people, uh, volunteering and donating, uh, their time to, to assist, uh, the chamber with that. Last thing I have is to thank all the candidates, uh, for running, uh, all of them, um, doesn't matter to me, political party, uh, I normally don't look much at that anyway. But everybody who's willing to run and to assist the community, county, city, what village, whatever, um, is, shows that, that people in this area have a lot of hope for their communities, and a lot of passion to see them improve, and that's always very encouraging, uh, uh, to, to me, to, to, to see that, so, thank you for that. And of course, I will echo the, the sentiments if you have not already voted, and it appears as how many have nationwide. I don't know about Williams County, I probably, I was thinking about checking with, um, AJ, but, uh, I would guess that we are probably well over, um, where we have been in the past, and, and that's also very encouraging to me, regardless of who you vote for, to exercise that right that so many. Regardless of who you vote for, to exercise that right that so many people have sacrificed for is, um, very important to, to all of us. But I'm encouraged by that as well, so please, if you have not voted, get out and vote. I did it early, uh, and they have a lot of, um, at each state, each place you're gonna go to poll, people are, are gonna have social distancing, wear a mask, and, and they'll have masks available for you. I, I would encourage you to wear those, they'll, they'll ask you to wear those, if not, you can, um, have the opportunity of some curbside, um, assistance. But, uh, please, please vote, and I think that's it, that's all the notes I had, so, uh, thank you all. Unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes, thank you.
Good night, all.